Council around, City Commission around the table with our City Manager. And on the audience we have.
William Girfer from the Law and Order Association.
Daddy Mam, Oregon City.
Rose Holden, Oregon City.
Colin Minor, Oregon.
Nancy Iced Tea Carter.
Scott Archer, Community Services Director.
David Wimmer, Finance Director.
Condon City Chief.
And.
Okay, great. Moving into our work session agenda, we have pulled off items A and B. And we will consider those in a future, a future meeting.
You're correct. And under the manager's fort, I need to get a little guidance on the upcoming Library District meeting from you.
Future agenda items, does anyone have anything that would like to be added? Jim?
I would like at our next City Commission meeting to add a executive session regarding items in litigation that are about to be filed. Because it doesn't appear that what's going on right now is consistent with what we discussed at our last executive session regarding that same matter. And I want to get an update and make sure that either it is consistent or whether we're changing it for some particular purpose.
Make sure Mr. Patterson are in discussion about that. Okay. Yes, Doug?
I'm the.
Which, which, City Council or?
Well, I asked probably a state session to develop its comment.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I just looked at the timeline here. What do you need? I just turned this off. Do you need it on?
Okay. Status of the Carnegie Task Force.
Just for clarification, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
When a commissioner makes a suggestion for a future agenda item, is it adopted or do we need a vote of the commission to add the agenda item?
I look for interest around the table. And if I see it, I say, if I, otherwise if I don't, I say, is that, is that something you'd all like to see in terms of that? So I saw that.
Okay, so were there head nods that we would have the executive session item?
Oh, let's talk about that one. Yeah, it's an update that we don't know about, so.
Okay.
I guess, we don't know what you're talking about, so we're gonna have to have the two of you confer on that.
Yeah, but can't, can't talk and.
Right, and if you decide that that's appropriate, then.
Okay. I'll do it.
At the next session, I've also, I've asked to have added to the City Council works, agenda, I did, I would like to update you on the Willamette Falls here to Jerry Coalition and request a for staff, we're ready to add a halftime staff, we'd like to talk to you about that. And then I also want to update you on, I have applied for and received a Leave a Legacy grant through the Oregon 150, and I want to make sure that you're aware and very supportive of what I would, what I'm proposing, so. We'll do that. And with that, are there others?
Yeah, actually in addition to tonight's agenda, I would ask the commission to invite Ms. Holden to discuss the Oregon Way application she is interested in. She, it's time limited, so if the commission's amenable, I would like to have her go first tonight.
I don't have a.
It's not on the agenda, and I'm concerned about that because that's, that's not in, her property is not in the city, and I'm not sure.
And it's not in keeping with our meeting, how we usually run reading, meetings adding like.
Right, so we don't, because to add something like that, we don't have, we don't have staff involved, do we?
I've had a, one meeting in the past with Rose and her group. At that point, you know, again, I think there's still a lot of questions that need to be answered on it. I think the, the big, there's two big issues probably for the commission is, because I think what Ms. Holden's talking about is property that is in the city but is in other ownership.
Correct.
And we need some confirmation before you go too far that those owners are in fact in support of this, because you would be planning someone else's property and though I think they indicate are, we, I have had no confirmation on it. The other issue is what is the expectation of the city beyond the grant? Because that, you just need to know that if you're gonna be the sponsors of a grant on this.
I, I still, being, she's got a tight timeline here, I still have no problem with her making a presentation.
Okay. I'd like to add that to the end of the agenda, Ben. So it would be item E considered first, too. Is that what your desire is, everybody?
My, yeah, my preference would be that she go first because she did indicate she's time limited. And maybe the thing to do would be to hear a presentation with perhaps an eye to adding as a future agenda item for next week's City Commission meeting, because there is a deadline for the application.
Well, I think we need to have a little discussion on that.
Yeah.
Do you need to be earlier on the agenda? Can you wait?
I have a client coming. All I wanted to say, all I want to say actually takes two seconds. All I.
Okay, well, hold on. Then, Daphne, go ahead.
The other day, we were, I don't remember if it was at a work session or a City Council meeting, but we were talking about, I think you brought it up, Commissioner Neely, on you would like to see any of the items that are in the Metro Enhancement Grants or the CIC, that, for, for instance, the concerts in the parks or events that the city would be, to be taken out of the grant and figured out how they're gonna be put in the grant, in the city budget.
Yeah, that's, that's not exactly what I said. What I said was I objected to the steep increase in the grant contribution to the concerts in the park from the previous year's budget versus, well, contribution to the current year's, but a contribution. Not, that's, I believe is what I said, and that, that pertained to the budget process. We're talking about the, about the budget.
Well, I, I wasn't there that night, so I can't say what it, well, was. I thought they said they bought a new sound system. Was that one of the things they bought?
You're talking about just concerts in the park?
Yeah.
That wasn't the only one that you were considering? Yeah.
Okay, but if, if indeed that's the direction we want to go with a lot of those events, Fourth of July and all kinds of events that are being taken out of grants, then I would like us to start moving up on the agenda, the, maybe the possibility or the discussion for park maintenance utility fees, so that we are going to be able to increase our general fund revenues to cover some of these new expenses if we're going to be, so.
Well, we haven't made the decision to take them out.
I know, but I'm just saying, so future agenda, maybe this next spring, maybe whenever it is, but if that's how we're thinking, that we're taking things out of grants and putting them into City General Fund, then we need to start looking at how we're.
I think it's, I think it's fine for discussion item.
Okay.
Well, we have, good mayor, just talking to her about time, I'm concerned about before and after here because.
Oh, it doesn't have to be next month or anything. That's a long term, but I wanted to bring it up, this is a time.
Well, let me just see where you want to have it, because the OCCIT ME grant discussion with those two grant committees is in October.
I think it's a good point, time to bring it up.
We have October 14th, so it seems to me that the discussion can begin there, if not, yeah, and then maybe follow that.
Okay.
Because the decision needs to be made about what we do with ongoing programs, I think, first, if that's okay?
Makes sense.
Okay.
Yep. And then I had two other things.
Go ahead.
That I had, one is I had been getting emails from some of the people on Main Street and photos of all the increased graffiti. And I don't know if a graffiti ordinance is, you know, a reasonable thing to suggest or not, but I know that we're gonna have the second half of the municipal code updates in January, so that's just something, I don't know. You, okay. And then the other thing I was reading about, and I thought it was interesting, and it's because of the economic downturn that we're in and houses being taken over by banks and foreclosed on, and that it was a concern over quality of neighborhoods being degraded from renters moving in and landlords, you know, they just don't earn that landlord's property, owners are just, you know, anything to, so they don't lose their house, so they're renting it. People aren't mowing the lawns, there's, you know, five cars stacked up, they're not taking out the garbage, it's, you know, what, they drop garbage service. So there was an idea for, it was an ordinance for rentals in single-family neighborhoods, and it was to instill that, if that's what you're going to do, then your neighborhood has to be okay with it, your neighbors, if you're gonna rent it, and that they have to jump through all the hoops, not like a business license on, for a business, but similar only for a property owner, so.
I think it's a case of having appropriate codes in place to deal with it, whether they rent their property or they own it. And frankly, you, you to suggest that somebody, for example, their, their parents passed away, of course, this is, and so now they've got a house, they want to hold on the house for whatever reason they want to, and they want to rent it. I don't know how you could legislate on that, and I probably object doing it.
And, you know, I didn't bring any background information on it tonight. I was just reading about it, and I thought, you know, this, I could think of a neighborhood where this has happened, and a house.
In our community.
Yes, and, and the concerns of the neighborhood that, well, that's how they're stuck with it. And it was a, a, a single family, or, yeah, a single family owned neighborhood, so.
I guess I get extremely sensitive about that one because of my more than 45 years of married life, more than half of it has been as a renter.
Okay. Not, I wasn't trying to insinuate anything unless or more renting.
It was insinuation. It was an insinuation about rental property.
Oh, okay, some rental property.
What we have, what we have to have in place are codes that apply to all property and enforce them.
Do you, does anyone want to have that?
Well, I don't have any problem in terms of codes, in terms of maintenance of housing and so forth. I think it's a great idea.
I didn't bring anything here to document this, so I just brought it up.
Okay, well, I think that what we would need to do first is have a review of what, so we understand what the code is and what the, how we.
Is Dan still here?
Yeah, he is.
So Dan, can I ask the planning, what's, have you heard of this?
I think he might have an issue with the fair housing.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, too. Sounds discriminatory, yes.
Okay.
It's going to be a little bit, too. You want to do a little bit more work on that before you bring it to us?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll let you, we'll let you do that, and then, are there any other?
Okay, so just for clarification, I heard this was a no. Three out of five, maybe even four out of five, didn't agree with this, and it's done.
I have no, I have no problem looking at codes applying to the maintenance of housing stock. I think that's fine.
Yeah. Well, that, I don't know how they've worded this, but that's what the goal was to do. It's not to discriminate. I've rented a good portion of my life, too.
I've seen in my neighborhood, housing purchased by new people, which the people previously owned it did a great job, and I see it deteriorating under the ownership of whoever's there.
Yeah, it can be either way.
So that's, I think it's a, I think it's a more general issue than renters and owners.
Yeah, I was gonna say, aesthetics, aesthetics in the neighborhood would be, would be mine all over. But you might want to do a little bit more background work on that. Okay, bring it back. Okay, anything else? Okay, well, if you, you want to walk on Rose then at this point, she's got time limits and.
Yes, yes.
Okay, I mean, walk, walk her on.
Don't walk over, I didn't say walk over. Would you please come on?
Before you move on, let me just make sure I've captured everything.
Okay. The reports.
Okay, I've got executive session in regards to the Herman litigation. I've got an update on the Carnegie Task Force, Limit Falls Heritage Area Staffing Leave Legacy Grant, I'm not quite sure.
I've got that written to Nancy already.
Okay. PMU, funding levels of ongoing programs which will take up at OCCIT.
PMU, oh, what was that for?
Park maintenance?
Payton. Isn't that Payton?
Payton.
Well, this would be park maintenance. This is what's gonna get confusing.
The other one isn't.
Me, too, yeah. And then graffiti ordinance.
Did we talk about, oh, what, what we do with graffiti?
No.
How we handle graffiti.
It's fine.
Willamette Falls?
I got that. Heritage area.
She said that, he said.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so now, we have, Rose, would you introduce yourself? And we'll pull that maybe a little bit closer to you, so you can be heard.
Yeah, Rose Holden.
You can pull that closer, probably.
There you go.
Does it sound on?
It's bright green if it is.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay. I just wanted to take a couple minutes because we are running out of time for this Oregon Way opportunity. And I brought the documentation with me tonight. What, the Governor of Oregon has appointed an advisory board called the Oregon Way Advisory Board. And what their goal is, is to, his goal was to have a body to select projects that can demonstrate Oregon's expertise in green technologies and be the model, a signature model for Oregon to demonstrate to the nation what Oregon is really good at. And in attending a couple seminar, or a couple meetings with Climate Solutions and hearing some people speak, what they're truly looking for is groups that have broken down silos and collaborated with outstanding resources of people who are doing innovative things and also groups that have met specific criteria. And so the papers that I've given you tonight demonstrate that Oregon City has a truly remarkable opportunity with its concept plan that they've developed as a complete and sustainable community. That concept plan meets the criteria that the Oregon Way, Governor Kolenkowski has set out for this project to be a signature model demonstration site for Oregon. And part of the requirement is that you need to be able to demonstrate a need for a minimum of $10 million. And by changing some of the conversation that we talk about, for instance, from infrastructure to ecostructure, creating jobs, green collar jobs, everything that we're doing in this concept plan is exactly what the Oregon Way is looking for.
Yes, but it's not in our, your, your, your property is not in the.
Absolutely not, and it does not need to be. We are working on, we have.
But it does for us.
Exactly. And so the, the point that I want to make tonight is that some of the conversations and the information should be gathered by the city. The city really should be, in my opinion, taking the lead on this and contacting the people with the Oregon Way, finding out what steps the city needs to go through to assist itself in qualifying for some of these funds. I feel like I'm working really hard to try and help the city meet some of its deficits. And I heard it expressed here at this table tonight about the need for jobs. What, you know, gee, we're trying really hard, why can't we make things, you know, why can't we meet our goals? Why can't we get people here? What's the matter? Well, here's an opportunity staring you in the face that you could seize the moment. You know, we don't have much time, but we're trying to offer a lifestyle to companies as well as placing their businesses here. We can create an eco district, we can create a green enterprise zone or an eco enterprise zone that is not dependent upon a demographic such as income levels for our community. There is a lot of opportunity here if we just get outside the box and if we just call somebody. The Oregon Way is begging for us to present them with something that does not have to be presented in a perfect completed form. But I can't do it all, and I feel like I'm doing this alone. And so my request is that the City Commission and the City Manager and staff make some phone calls and see, really, what does this take? Because I don't think that me as an individual is gonna get as far with the Oregon Way Committee as an official from the city will.
Don't we have to have a site?
We have, the, well, the site is the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan. The project is the Green Economy Center to start off with.
Yeah, but I don't know.
But to find out information is only a phone call.
Yeah, no, no, I understand that, and I'm familiar with Oregon Way and Bend, I've said a number of times, because it is where this money has been going. But I don't understand how we could administer a project that isn't in our city boundaries. That's.
I'm not talking about doing anything on my land, I'm talking about doing it, Terry Emret is in agreement, and it can start there. He's signing a document as soon as Kelly Hosseini finishes it. So we have the property. Well, maybe I'm speaking out of turn here, but the first guideline is to be considered by the advisory group. A project must be cosponsored by the state agency, okay, so if the city's gonna do it, but one private sector company organization, so, and maybe a for-profit business or a nonprofit, but. So we have our development company. We also have Oregon Wind that is collaborating, and our nonprofit is Family Stepping Stones.
It's, you know, since it's gonna be on.
They should be here.
Yeah, that's what I find difficult.
They were at the meeting with Larry. Oregon Wind is also a collaborative partner.
Who were, who was at that meeting?
Oregon Wind, Sadi Clark was there, Brenda with Family Stepping Stones was there.
When was this meeting?
Was Terry Emret there?
Terry Emret was not there, but he gave me authority to speak on his behalf. And he is signing an agreement with us. All I'm asking, all I'm asking is, don't put up the boundaries and the barriers here. Check into it. Call Oregon Way and see what the city's role would be before you say no.
We're not, we're not saying no, I don't think.
I'm trying to understand, I mean, first of all, if, that's, that's a lot of staff work for something that's got less than a month to, to come to fruition, and we don't have the property owners in the room.
If the city could get more than $10 million to build the, the infraecro, ecostructure, it's not worth making a phone call?
Well, we haven't done the background work on that.
I under, I know, but I've been talking about this now for a couple months. It's not new.
Can I, can I just?
No, I understand that, too, and I understand the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan, but this is like brand, brand new for us to have to sponsor.
Let me, let me suggest this.
Yeah.
I can, I'll be glad to make the phone call, because I think the concept is a good one, and Rose and I have had these conversations. I think we're gonna be hard pressed to put together a competitive grant, because basically what you're looking at trying to do to make the project a reality is you're really, in a new sense, you're, you're trying to build, if you will, in loose terms, an industrial park, because you need the infrastructure, be it the eco infrastructure or traditional infrastructure, so that you can make those developments happen. I think the piece that's missing, I think we have the concept, is you have to have the framework that defines the cost, so you can put an application, say, this is what you, ask for a blanket $10 million, and you don't even know what the cost of what you're putting in the ground is. You can do it that way, you can submit it. That's a pretty loose application, and that's a lot of effort for what I think will be an application that is not very competitive, but I could be wrong. I'll be glad to call and ask and see what's, what's needed there. It's a lot of work in a short period of time, and I don't know how you define those costs in that amount of time to make that, that request yet. I know we're working on it, but I know what it, I mean, these projects are complicated, and I know what it takes to get these things done, and it's a very short time frame.
Well, we could, you, but you will check into it. Let us know what you know about it at the next City Commission. If it entails us having an additional meeting afterwards, if it appears that something could go forward, then we could, even if we needed to have an additional meeting.
Yeah, so I just have way lots of questions that I think need to be answered. Jim?
Sure, a couple of questions. Can I go back to the history of this and when, when this meeting that Rose is mentioning, when did that take place? It's been a couple of months now?
Yeah, it's been a couple of months ago. I don't know this right now. All I really want to do is to say, we have an opportunity here, I'd like to try and salvage the opportunity. That's all. I didn't want to get into a big old discussion about it or anything like that. I want you to look at the documents, take a minute to see the opportunity, and I'm gonna continue to go forward, and I'm gonna try and submit something with or without the city's help. I would like you to be supportive, at the very least.
Oh, let's see if we can be. I mean, you know, the parameters of it, the, the structure, the funding, I mean, I think all of that are important, kind of, to know.
The state agency, the state agency is not the city. The state agency is like Business Oregon, so, so it's not a problem.
Do you have them lined up?
I have contact with them, and we're following up on it next week. I can't get to it this week.
Do you think they'd be writing the grant?
That's one of, one of, no, we, we write the grant. We write for it.
Who's we?
My team. Chris Cocker, Kelly Hosseini, Dave Paulson.
The state agency probably can write the grant, grant to the state.
No, they're the cosponsor.
And then what would the city's role be?
Your co-applicant with our development company.
Okay, well, it sounds like we need some staff, a little bit of staff work.
And that's kind of why I thought that perhaps somebody could make a phone call to just get the parameters specifically laid out with what the city's role would be.
So I guess you need to tell us how much staff investment this is going to take, too, because it's not.
At the moment, it'd be a phone call, I would think.
Well.
Assuming, assuming that the phone call were fruitful.
Yeah, right.
How, how much staff input would it require?
Yeah, I think we need to know that, because if we have to do, if we have to do the research on, on.
Let me find out what they're expecting for.
Okay.
That's exactly all I ask, all I ask for is that.
Okay, thank you.
And we can go from there. And the city may not have to do much of anything, because we've already, we've been working on this now for more than two months. But to know what their role needs to be is what I would like to know.
Okay.
Given these initial steps, would it be appropriate to request an agenda item at the next City Commission meeting?
That's what he said.
So we will have an agenda, okay, great.
Well, we're talking about next Wednesday?
Yes.
Well, that would probably just be.
But that, that would, that would, yeah, that would just be.
Yeah.
It would be a brief agenda item.
I think that's the phone call, I mean, oh, you're losing your staff person, aren't you?
Well, Terry's actually going on vacation, and I'm leaving in the morning, and will be gone through until Monday to the OCCMA conference, but I'll see if I can find out something during that time.
See, I would call, I would call myself and talk to them, but I'm wondering about how that, that is gonna look, if I call on the half of the city and I try to explain why the city's not calling on their phone.
I can do it from there. Thank you, Larry.
Okay, I'd be glad to be a liaison, too, if I can.
I just don't think it would be looking quite.
No, I agree. Thank you. Okay, let's move on, Ben. We have two other agenda items. First.
I mean, if my Commissioner, Madam Seda requested that C V put at the end, do you, do you care at this point?
I don't think there's any reason.
No, no, I would, I would like to leave it for the.
Let's change your order.
Why?
Well, because he's requested it, it was his item.
Well, I don't understand any reason to change it. I don't see any.
I don't know what the, how, how long the number C is gonna take, and.
Well, let's just.
Yeah, let's just see, we've got, we, we dump up two.
We dump A and B.
I think there's no reason to not stake them in order. I don't see any compelling reason.
Rocky, you're kind of the swing vote on this.
I, I don't have any problem putting, putting change your.
We're gonna probably get to it either way, so I don't know.
We'll get to it either way. I don't think it's a big issue.
I don't know how long it's gonna take either, but.
Let's just roll. Let's roll.
Dick?
All right.
Okay, first, this is an item brought by Commissioner Seda, by Jim. And this is the, oh, I have, yeah, I have that. That is.
Sorry.
An item on, on communications.
This is kind of a continuation of an ongoing discussion. I think at the last work session, we had a presentation by the City Manager regarding communications, and I think this is kind of an ongoing discussion. I've sent around this memo, and I want to carry the discussion forward and try to get to a point where we can be kind of on the same page regarding some significant institutional issues regarding communications and information disclosure. And I frankly don't think we're there yet. And I, at the end of this memo, I put some specific bulleted items on issues we can consider. And from my own perspective, and I have to, you know, be upfront about where I am as an individual City Commissioner politically and, and as far as my own values of, of information to this disclosure go, I recognize that as a political matter, I'm in a substantive minority, often with Commissioner Smith, in a three to two minority, we are a commission minority. We are also new, and there are items that the majority of this commission has been working on for several years. That said, I feel that a lot of the things I have asked for as far as information disclosure have been refused to me, in part on a political basis, because I want to go deeper into issues. I have, you know, and these values are forged one over one's lifetime, more significant interest in, in, you know, revealing information to, you know, make sure that, you know, the public knows what's going on, as far as how we're making decisions. And a lot of these have to do, in particular, as you see here, with what's gone over the past several months with the Cove projects. And I, I have the impression that there is, an impression of me of, of opposing the Cove project, and I've said continually that I don't oppose the Cove problem, project, to have several issues of the way it's being managed. But I, I do have the impression of having been denied information out of the, out of the impression that I'm opposed to it, and I will give a particular instance of a conversation I had with the mayor, who told me that I have the reputation of wanting to, quote, sabotage the Cove project. And she did use the word sabotage. And that is a, that is, that is, I think, a misimpression, and, and I don't, even if that were the case, I don't know how the disclosure of information would give me any power to sabotage the Cove project. If the Cove project is going to stand, it certainly will stand even if there are, is full disclosure on whatever happens with the Cove project. I don't think the Cove project has been carried forward in, in, in compliance with our, our city land use ordinances. And I've mentioned in Urban Renewal Commission, the fact that the, and I mentioned this to the consultant for the developers on the water quality resource assessment, I think that water quality resource assessment is pretty severely non-compliant with our water quality resource area code. So, I mean, there was a litany in here of, of instances where I did have the impression that, you know, staff was not forthcoming with my information requests. And, you know, that's an institutional conflict, and, I mean, it may continue to, to go on. I'm not going to back down on my position that I have a right to information to keep the Cove accountable in how we move it forward. And I think that any, you know, information disclosure that I, that I try to, you know, information that I try to bring to light would necessarily be adverse to whether the Cove project ultimately is successful or not. And, and why, why, because my role as a city commissioner is precisely as the elected body of the people to keep things, you know, accountable. Public information is a part of accountability. I mean, and, and, you know, you can accuse someone of going on a fishing expedition or whatever, but the fact is, you know, in an open society, the people who spend this money, we are asking the taxpayers to spend $10 million, the city commission and the Urban Renewal Commission has a duty to the public to make sure that everything is on track and according with statutes and codes, and information requests are part of that. I have no apologies for any of that. The, most of these, as I say, relate to the Cove project. My experience, you know, requesting information regarding the Cove project has, it's been interesting to me in highlighting some of the issues I have with, with charter provisions and how they're interpreted. One of them, as I've mentioned, I'm, I've come to my own reading of the charter, and maybe other people have a different view of this. I'm concerned, I would even say frustrated, by the assumption that seems to be on this commission, that an individual city commissioner does not have the right to ask for legal counsel or legal advice to the city attorney, and have that be submitted back to him, one, in a timely way, two, at all, and that the entire, we, it's only the entire city commission that can ask for legal advice. I mean, the city charter, as I mentioned in this memo, specifically says that the city, or the city code, I'm sorry, specifically said that the code, that the attorney shall be the legal advisor to all city officers. And I would challenge anybody to say that an elected city commissioner is not an officer of the city. Therefore, any individual city commissioner has the right to ask the city attorney for legal advice, or legal opinions, or legal memos, even if a commissioner is a member of a minority. And even, even in fact, let's say the worst-case scenario of some people is, is true, and that I were trying to sabotage the Cove project. I mean, the part, I mean, there, legal debates are like any other debates. I mean, you, you go back and forth, you say this, I say that, and, and you come to a conclusion. A, a city commissioner, as an elected official, has the right to voice a minority opinion. And as part of voicing that minority opinion, the city commissioner has the right to the information and the legal conclusions to make the argument of that minority position. I mean, it's the whole idea of the loyal opposition. So I, the incident that I describe in this memo, the most, I mean, most of you have heard these, like, ad nauseam.
No, you don't need to go over them.
You don't need to.
No.
Okay, but...
And I want to really be focused on the solution.
Sure. Yes. Okay. In any case, I want to figure out how we can move forward in, in coming to a consensus on how each city commissioner can function, and being able to voice an opinion, and being able to inform that opinion with both information and legal advice asked for and received in order to have an informed debate. And I think one of them, if you want, if you want a specific solution, one of the things I mentioned in here is, I don't think that the city attorney should be forwarding legal memos solely to the city manager. If I, as a city commissioner, voice a concern, and that concern involves legal advice, I should get that advice directly from the city attorney, and not have the city attorney forward that advice to the city manager, and whether through inadvertence or intention, have the city manager not forward the legal advice that I requested to me, as has happened. So that's, as far as one specific solution, that's what I would like to put forward. Also, I would like us to come to a consensus on this issue of whether a city commissioner can make direct requests for information to staff, because as I mentioned in this memo, I see nothing in the charter itself that grants the city manager the power or authority to direct city staff to refuse a city commissioner's request for information, and there's nothing in the city char, city charter that indicates that a city commissioner has to get a priori approval from the city manager to request information from staff, whether it be the city manager himself, or the, you know, the, the on-the-ground city staff member, him or herself. Those are two specific items of, you know, agreement that I think we could come to, that would move this discussion forward. And I, you know, I will gladly take the brick bats in response.
I have to say something, and then I want to turn that over to city manager. The, all that you, that you say legally, technically, that you're reading, is, is correct. However, I believe that the, another responsibility that we have, well, we have several, one is that we work as a team. No matter if you're a minority or a majority member, we work as a team, and all of our work is to build the team. And the team includes our city manager and the, and the staff. The team also needs resources. Our staff can't do the work if we are making requests that are, that don't take us to someplace, that, that don't take us to information that we need. I, I've worked on three city councils now. Doug's worked on, he's, he's had more. And I think it's very, you learn, I think, that this is very important to have the information that you need, but together we can, that's why we instituted the work session, actually, which was supposed to be before a city council meeting, so that we could find out what we needed to make a decision. And so it's, it's, it's important for me that the staff is free to do the work that they do, both in time, and, and every request we make of the city attorney, for instance, and we had, we had a city councilor that did that, ran up a big, big bill, and if it's not something that's of benefit to us all, and I'm not sure that under the scenario of, of many, many, many requests, that, that we don't have to have a major, you know, a majority view to spend those resources. So that's just sort of a starting, a starting point, that there's really more to the memo and to, to create the ability to get work done, to implement, rather than just to research. There's, there needs to be sort of an orderly way of getting our information and filtering it, and there needs to be clear goals, that where, where we're headed, and, and how that information fits in.
Can I, before, I'm going to make three comments, because he might want to integrate some of his response in there, too. The, the issue of a, I'm going to separate two, two points in terms of the attorney. The one is that if a request is coming from a commissioner, the response to my, even if it's from an individual commissioner, the response should be to all, including the city manager, but to us as well. So however we're dealt with, it should be CC'd to us, no matter what mechanism we, we use.
He's good about that.
Yeah. Well, he, he's stating that there have been legal, that there have been communications to, from the city attorney directly to Larry Patterson that he didn't get. Now, I'm not going to comment on that, because I don't know that for a fact, but...
Yes, you do, because you were CC'd on, on my email regarding that.
Well, that's true. Okay, that's true, but the other thing is, though, and we've talked about this before, is our, our continuously escalating cost to the city is attorney fees, and at what, what, what point are we, you know, having an impact on the budget? The, the third, well, I hope I jogged my memory here, the third point I wanted to make was, had to...
Direct to staff.
Huh? Staff time, exactly right. I, I suggest that the way I've done it, and I've, nothing has ever been indicated to me it's a problem, I direct a memo to staff and I CC it to the city manager, and I, and I don't know that you've always done that. And I'm sure I've slipped up sometimes on that, but it was not within any intent. And if, that gives the city manager the opportunity to communicate with the staff member whom he's responsible for, or who, who, to, the staff members, he's got the responsibility to managing that staff, we don't. And I, I think that interaction has to happen. I think otherwise we go crossways in our communication, and really, to, to no benefit.
And I think it's really important to understand that the city manager is probably the only one in the city that has the big picture. He knows, he knows the moving parts, and if you want to comment.
Yeah, let me go through this. And again, I, I looked at this memo as it came in this afternoon, and I think it's a matter of different perspectives. I think if you really go through here, there's not a bit of that information that has not reached the commission, perhaps not in the same timeframe that everyone would have wanted it, but none of it has been withheld.
Well, the key is getting it when, when, before a decision is made.
Let him finish.
You have to understand, a lot of this stuff doesn't necessarily just, I don't always have that. It takes time to develop, and sometimes we don't have the answers, such as the inquiry to the city attorney. Actually, the commission did have that answer, because Mr. Janik gave it at the meeting on February the 4th, if you go back and look at the video streaming, but I had to go back and make sure, in fact, what was the situation, and there was some debate about whether or not the Cove project started all over, and I'm not going to give you an incomplete answer, and that leads to time. I cannot turn some of these things around, because one person wishes that. In regards to the city attorney's time, if you look at the charter, in the charter, I, I really think you have a misinterpretation of the charter, because I think it's very clear. The commission has two officers, the county court judge and the city manager. Everyone else in there works through the city manager. If you have a request for information, it should go to the city manager. I cannot control your budget if everyone can run everywhere and ask for information, and particularly if that takes action above and beyond what they're normally doing. So your request for information needs to come to the city manager's office, and Mr. Nocida, in your case, it usually goes to anybody else, and it may take two or three days for it to even find out it's been made, which I have cautioned staff on that as well. And the charter is very explicit in terms of all employees work for the city manager. So therefore, they are not there to be responsive to a commissioner's request. If you have something you need from staff, that request comes to me. And again, I go back, and the city attorney, I don't think it is appropriate for all of you to make a request to the city attorney, for him to write a legal opinion, if that's something that the bulk of the commission feels they need, because that is a cost to that legal budget. And if it's something that you, as a group, said, you know, we don't really need that, that answer, then I think that has to be controlled. If not, when you really get in a contentious environment, you're going to have a legal budget out of control. And I think that's, and again, the attorney is kind of ambiguous in there, because he's a contract attorney, but I think, too, that works through the city manager's office. And Ed, I think, is, is aware of that. He indicated today he'd be glad to weigh in on this memo, if, if you would like him to do that. I told him I would like his opinion. So again, I, I think you need to go back and look at that charter a little closer. I do think there's a way to do this, and I don't want to debate these issues, because it doesn't take us anyone's back and forth. My charge is to provide the commission the information they need. I think you have to make a decision, as a group, on really how much information is needed, and where do you spend your staff resources? And right now, a lot of my time is being eaten up by a minority view on this commission. And does, is, does that make your decision better? We spent two and a half days last week going back to give you detailed information on what Mr. Archer had already provided at more than one meeting, that the city hall building was a secure building. And I think the folks who presented that, there were some questions about, does it meet code, this, that, and the other, but there had never been a debate in everything we had done of whether that building was structurally sound, because that was part of the due diligence, and the answer we had, to a point that it was sufficient to move forward, was yes it was. And I think you heard that last evening, or last Wednesday evening as well. Now, is that where we want to, I mean, we'll be glad to do that, if that's where the commission wants us to run down and do those things, but it takes a lot of time, it takes a lot of money, and you get, I mean, we're not going to bring you something, because there's, there's no motive for us to, to try to sell you on a project that doesn't work. And I think, you know, we've done a good job in explaining the shortcomings of the building, as well as the pluses of that. And, and that's just one example. We're not hiding information, and I thought, again, I don't know how we get through the debate when I can bring a, a staff member like Mr. Archer, I can be there, and what we tell you, based on all the folks we've worked with, or even Mr. Janik, is we have to have someone else tell us again. It's like, we're, you know, the, the implication is, for some reason, we're not being truthful. I don't know where you go with that, and I don't know how you operate as a team with that type of approach to things.
Daphne?
I'm very sorry that, this, I'm very sorry tonight that this is the only memo that you brought, because your follow-up memo in relation to this, I feel, holds the keys to some of how you were thinking about this. And first of all, let me tell all my commissioners, the city staff, and everyone in Oregon City that's listening tonight, that I'm very embarrassed that we're having to have this discussion publicly, but you wanted everything public, so here we are. publicly, but you wanted everything public, so here we are, now we're in this spot. So your next, your consecutive email was, leads me to think that a lot of this, you're speaking from fear and emotion and not reason, and your depiction of the job, of our job as a city councillor, and in fearing the press, to have a press or a public opinion be different than yours, as stirring primal fear within you, is, I don't, that's not reason, that's fear and emotion. And many times in this position, we get beat up. My first year here, one, I don't know what it was, it was a land use hearing, the room was so angry at me that Mr. Sullivan had to go like this, to tell him to be quiet, to let me finish. I've been ridiculed, I've been, had poor introductions for speeches, I've had all kinds of things. This isn't a job for sissies, this is a tough job, and it's not easy to not be popular. So, you know, you talk about the libel and slander for you, I am, at this point, want to stand up for the city that I love dearly, and that the staff and, that I have grown to respect and invalidate their work. I mean, I care about this, and you know, the libel and slander is, there's almost a tipping point, and it's going the other way. And I've personally met with you, I'd love to work with you, and it's, like you said in this memo, it's an issue of trust, but it's also, you know, I, Jim saw me walk in with my little classbooks, Jim's an environmentalist attorney, I'm, I don't have a degree in it, but team building communications, that's my background in college, and, you know, that's where we got to go on these issues. So we start dealing with reason and can move ahead in city business, instead of just debating all these incorrect assumptions or false assumptions, fears, and-
Communications are very important, as I said before we put it on the agenda, you know, it's, we'll never get it right, because it's something, every marriage works on it, every relationship has to work on communication, so it's good for us to work on it. So I have a couple of suggestions, because the, again, one of the most important meetings, I think, that we have is our goal-setting session in January. You guys, we're very new at that time, and we set the goals, which is essentially the roadmap for staff to do their work. And since then, I think we're not very clear about where we're going, because we've kind of wandered, wandered around from that. So my couple of suggestions might be, I mean, we do, we need to learn to work together, and I think we need to learn to declare what our vision is for the project as well, not just what we're against, but what we're for. And I think that'll go a long ways, but so there's two possibilities. One is that, that we go back into the goal-setting, and if we look at the path we're on, and reaffirm, again, where we are, because I guess, you know, I get a little testy about it, and the sabotage that I talked about wasn't necessarily the Cove project, it's sort of, it's, I sort of see what's happening with staff is that their work's being sabotaged a little bit. They're spending an inordinate amount of time, and again, I've been here a while, so I've seen how, our great need when we're new, to learn the system and how things work, and learn land use and vegetation, and sewers and water, and police and fire, and it's an overwhelming job. So often, our first year's spent learning, but what I see is that the staff is being inhibited in their work by, by a lot of, perhaps we don't understand exactly where the information requests are headed. And then, so one idea would be to reconvene in a goal-setting session, and then the other one would be, if we want to work, develop some techniques of working together for feeling that, that, I mean, we're being a little bit dysfunctional, I, I'm a consensus builder, and we haven't been able to build much consensus since January, is that we could have a facilitator come and meet with us, to work us, work us through ways to communicate the trust issues, which I feel are really rampant, and figure out together how, but the only way I would consent to that is if we're really committed to wanting to improve the way we work together. But those would be my, my two cons- done.
You're accused of sabotage, I'll just make a statement, because I made it at the time, when ODOT and the city had come to, the city staff had come to sort of some kind of resolution as to the Agnes project, you wanted to reject, you wanted to reject that deal, and I made the statement at the time, that'd be a project killer, and I think that was true, and personally, I felt at the time that probably that was your intent. And you can argue that's not what the case was, but I think, in effect, it would have been a project killer. I don't think ODOT would have given in, they had worked out some kinds of agreements. I have no objection for you raising that, I mean, that's fine. I guess my concern is, I mean, I do have a financial concern in terms of how much the attorney's bills will run up to, and I do have that concern. My concern is this, to, when you're going to criticize anybody, and it's usually the city manager, that you do it at the commission meeting, and that's the South End thing that we were talking about this last time. You could have called him up, and you could have just talked about your displeasure, you could have asked him, why didn't he pull the item himself? You could have done several things, instead of basically browbeating him, I'm sure he's browbeaten, but in any case, bashing him at a public meeting like that. I don't think that makes very good relations between the commission and the city manager when that happens. Those kinds of things, I think, need to be dealt with one-to-one, and if, if there's still issues involved, maybe that's the time we're talking about certain staff relations that need to be taught, spoken about at an executive session, or something of that nature, but I, I think it's forthcoming. I do believe in things of commission interest, I would like to see the communications that involve the city manager and the attorney copied to all of us at the time, and not, not forwarded at a later date, and I, I think that's what's happened in the past, I think it should continue to be what's the case. It'll probably give a better basis of saying, is this the, is this the process the commission wants to go to? Is the commission as a whole enough concerned about a given issue that we want to essentially pay the, pay the freight for getting information that we need? And sometimes it's probably going to be that way, but I think, I think everybody needs to be copied, frankly, in terms of any attorney communications, and that's, that's my opinion.
And that's normally the case. Let me point out, too, that a lot of this is in question here, was a communication from Mr. Sullivan, and it was on a project that Mr. Janik was lead attorney on, and it was obvious when Mr. Sullivan wrote his first memo that he and Mr. Janik had not talked, and that would have been just adding confusion to an issue, and what my task was, to get those two individuals to discuss those issues and come up with mutual understanding of what the issues were. And in the end, there was only one remaining issue, and it's one that we really haven't dealt with, because we never moved that point, and that had to do with exempting of that contract from the public bidding. Everything else was really a non-issue in that, once they had that conversation, which is indicated by the memo that you eventually got, that had Janik's comments on there, so.
Yep, Jim.
Okay. I would like to very gently and politely respond to some of what's been said. First, to Doug's point, you, I think you have, although perhaps inadvertently, highlighted my point and concern, and I want to take you back to the Agnes Road project that you were talking about, and the point of the concern I had as being a deal breaker. If you go back to the memo on the Agnes Road project, where the city attorney responded in all capital letters to all the various concerns I had, okay? And the city attorney on that specific memo forwarded it to Mr. Patterson, and Mr. Patterson did not forward it to any of us, okay? There's no dispute about that. If you look at that memo-
That's what he just explained.
No, that's a different memo.
But you've got to remember, that was also a land use proceeding that was before you at, at a meeting, that was on appeal by ODOT, and we don't normally have that, we can't share all that stuff.
That wasn't, no, no, that wasn't a land use appeal. That was, that was, that was a negotiation of an intergovernmental agreement, it was not a land use appeal, I'm sorry.
ODOT appealed.
No, that wasn't an appeal hearing, that was the negotiation of an IGA.
Well, go on.
Okay, but the point is, the point is, if you go back to that memo, the city attorney specifically addressed the concern I had, which you later pointed out yourself, which I frankly didn't know, which was that the access was adequate, otherwise not from Agnes, and that the, the access onto the Cove site was not contingent on only the access from Agnes onto the interchange of 213 and Washington there. Now, had that information been provided to me, and I would have had that as part of our deliberations process, then my considerations would have been different, because I would have had the adequate information to base a decision.
So the solution is, I want to keep it solution oriented.
Sure.
So the solution would be?
That the city attorney send all of his memos, not just to the city manager, but to all the commission. I think we're not in disagreement on that.
Well, we, we accept that he works for our city manager, so the city manager needs to send those on.
Well, sure, and we do, no, I disagree with that, and I'll look forward to the city managers, or the city attorney's memo on that point, but I totally disagree that the city attorney works solely for the city manager.
Not solely.
Yeah.
Not solely.
I tend to, I tend to agree with Commissioner Seeta on this particular issue, and-
Is your mic on?
I don't want anybody to record me, anyway. But anyway, I really strongly agree with Commissioner Seeta on this particular action. I think where we have to be cautious of is where the legal, the legal aspects of it, when they're confidential, have to be clearly indicated that they're confidential, I'm sure you, more than anybody else, appreciate that aspect of it, that's usually put there in the statement in the memo. I do feel that we need to be copied on these issues that are coming forward, frankly.
Rocky.
I agree with that as well. I don't have, that, that concern that Commissioner Seeta brought up is the main concern that I have. The other issues regarding staff, I mean, I understand the financial implications of all that, and I have had no problem, with the exception of attending that meeting, which I thought I gave you a heads up on, I've been pretty knowledgeable about the fact that I think I should go through the city manager, and I think that's appropriate, or at least copy him on information if we're asking staff questions. So I don't have so much of an issue with that point. One of the things, though, that concerns me, and I think we all definitely just want to figure out how to resolve this, because we all do have to work together for the next couple of years, and-
Twenty, a year and a half.
Well, it could be longer, right? It could be longer, depending on who stays. But I guess, I guess one of the things that, that, that I hope, and I'm vocal about this in all of the various worlds that I live in, consistency is huge, and I don't care necessarily what the procedures are necessarily, but as long as it's consistent across the board to everybody, and that's, that's where I have problems. I also have concerns, because it feels very much that the implication is given, that the fact that we're not working as a team is due to the fault of the minority of us, and I don't necessarily feel that that's the truth. I think that it's, you know, as a team, we're all responsible for that, and I, myself, and I actually spoke to the city manager about this recently, I very much felt the first city commission meeting, that it was very clear that my vote had no value, and I was very disappointed in the first city commission meeting, because I was very, I felt very strongly that from that day on, no matter what I said, wasn't going to have really any effect in terms of the vote, that I was, that I was going to be able to say what I wanted to say, but that the outcomes have already been decided, and I won't go into the details of what specifically, you know, unless I need to. But that, that meeting was very clear, and so from that point, I think that has set a tone that has made it hard for me to feel a part of this team. And I've worked with most of you prior to being on the commission, and I have great respect for all of you. So, you know, I, I just want to work forward to as well. I just hope that you are all willing to do the same, and I, you know, I guess that's all I want to say. I don't want to go into a bunch of stuff, because I could talk about some of my feelings about this for a long time, but I don't think it's doing any good to do that, and to move on to the next phase, but I'll just leave it at that.
Anyone else have anything else to say? Okay, I guess we're going to continue to work on communications.
I think we've come up with a few things that are, in terms of our expectation, and Mayor Norson might be just, you've been taking notes to go through that, because this is what, what we've said, that I think there was some agreement on.
I'm not clear on whether we have a consensus that the city attorney sends all of his legal advice and opinions to the entire city commission.
And that, that, I feel should be the case.
Let me indicate that those are forwarded to the city commission, and the Agnes Road issue, again, that was on appeal to the city commission, and we don't normally have those conversations outside of that hearing, so that was a little different situation than normal run-of-the-mill legal issues, which I think you, I don't know of any that has been withheld.
I don't, I don't disagree with that.
So when the, so what we're saying, that when, well, I don't think there's ever been a case when the city attorney hasn't mailed, hasn't done a memo to all of us. He doesn't send individual memos, as far as I know. I've never gotten individual-
There have been a couple of incidences, sure.
Where he sent an individual memo, without copying all of us?
No, that, that memos, memos both to the city commission and the urban renewal commission have only been sent by the city attorney to the city manager, and the city manager hasn't forwarded them. There's been more than one incident of that.
And those are which ones?
Well, the two I mentioned specifically, the one, the one on the Agnes Road issue is one, the one that you're mentioning with Mr. Janik, that memo was in fact addressed to the urban renewal commissioner, commission as a whole.
And again, when Mr. Janik and Mr. Sullivan talked, and Mr. Janik added his comments, you did receive a copy of that one. You didn't get the first one from Mr. Sullivan, because, again, there was a lot of things that, Mr. Sullivan was not the lead attorney on, he raised concerns, those should have been discussed with Mr. Janik, which I had to get those two together before you got the, if not, you would have been running down some rabbit trails of two attorneys who had not talked, and again, Ed was looking at something without the information. Well, and on the Agnes Road, if you'll go back and look, that was on appeal from ODOT.
Okay, so I think as we wrap up here-
I'm a little bit confused, it was on appeal from ODOT, but why wouldn't we get, why wouldn't we get the memo?
Well, because normally, all that stuff is presented in the hearing.
That still could be part of the, that's still, that's still going to be part of the record coming in.
Well, I suppose, yeah.
I mean, I, so I don't know how that's an issue. I mean, we've seen it.
And normally, those issues, I always go back through planning, and that comes out of, out of planning, as opposed to something that I usually jump into anyhow, so.
But it was, it was appealed to us, we would have, we would have been the one to see it, and I would say that that, that would be a case where we could have been copied, copied and enjoyed, but I understand that would be part of the record.
But Mr. Sullivan did go through that at the city commission meeting.
Yeah, I understand that.
Okay, so we have some sensitivity around-
Can I come back to that?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Because sometimes I'm in a position of a slow learner, and for me to have the email ahead of time gives me a better understanding of what's being discussed, when it's being presented, and I think there's a real benefit.
Okay, I think one of the things we've talked about is, is what information we need upfront, and I think that, we didn't say this, but we need it in a, we need it in a timely manner, but I think the courtesy of staff, that I've heard several of you talk about, is that we also need to make those requests with clear understanding of where we're going with it. So, and I really like the fact of a work session before, because then we can talk about what we need to make a good decision, and we, we need information to make good decisions, we all know that, there's no disagreement on that, on that piece. So the, I guess we're asking that our city manager be- So the, I guess we're asking that our city manager be very consistent about mailing out communications from our attorney when appropriate. I still think that if he doesn't feel it's appropriate, that he has the right to not do that. I don't, I don't want to go over these cases again.
I think I have the, I should have the flexibility that if I have staff, and if the attorneys want them to disagreeing with one another, if we need to get that resolved so that you have what is the staff information versus a bunch of talking heads on an issue. And that was the Sullivan memo and the first Sullivan note until we got Janik in together.
So you've heard our discussion about that one, and then Rocky's point about consistency of information, consistency of response, consistency of process, that's good. And again, I think while we're eager and hungry for information, I think that we probably do need to have, if it's a huge request, it's going to require a great deal of staff resource, meaning both time and money, that we probably need to have three head nods to do that. Because, yes, an individual has the right to it, but it also has to further the project. Do we have disagreement on that piece?
Well, I just, I guess the concern I would have about that is that...
You want to read way more context than I do.
Well, there's, people are different. People have different judgments on what information is pertinent. What all of you might find not pertinent, I might find pertinent, and vice versa. And I don't think, I mean, who, I don't think, I think it is in the discretion of a city commissioner to define for him or herself what is pertinent for him or herself.
I think to be clear, though, about where you're going with it. It's why you need it. I mean, if you guys had said a couple of meetings ago, you know, I believe that the new building is unsafe, that's a very different action required than developing all of the stuff around the edges and coming back to us kind of as a surprise.
I did bring that up at the meeting before, when I was not present, that it was an issue that I'd heard, and so I did bring it up.
Yeah, and I thought, we thought it was resolved. Yeah, yeah.
And Mr. Archer addressed that to me. Let me add a couple of other things on your list, too, just in case this got missed.
Well, the one is that I don't think we disagreed that requests for use of staff time and staff information need to go through Larry, because he's the one that understands...
Let me make a call with Nancy. I phrase, I still feel that it's easier for me to make a request, an email for certain issues directly to the staff person with a carbon copy to Larry. At that point, of course, Larry can talk to that person. I don't need, I mean, if it's something that's so directly specific to that staff member, so as long as, as long as the city manager is copied.
Yeah, I would, you know, given the issues we're having, and I haven't disagreed with that in the past, I think we may want to change that, that that comes to me. I'll forward the email on to staff because, well, I mean, we do have, at this point, commissioners going directly to staff and asking, and it stays sometime before I'm getting that information back.
Well, if I do that, my preference then would be to copy it to the staff and question to, and send it to them.
That would be okay. In fact, that would actually give them a better, and then they can ask me if, you know, how they fit that in. The, I think you also need to understand that a lot of these requests, the turnaround time may take more, and if there's a decision that's before you that you don't have that information, I think you just need to state, you know, I'm not ready to make this because I don't have this. Then you can decide as a group whether all of you need that information or not to make the decision, move on. In fact, actually, when the evening the urban renewal commission approved the Cove, I'd even indicated that, wasn't asking for action because there's some places that need to be filled in, but the group felt they wanted to move on, and we had to make a caveat that, and carve out that one piece because that was not in that agreement. We didn't know where that was going to go. That I can't control. The other thing you need to understand, too, if you don't get something, and particularly if it's an email, right now, I'm running anywhere from 100 to 200 emails a day. It's easy for one to get lost in there. If you really need something, or if you think it's not getting responded, pick up the phone and call, because it could have got missed. I think every staff member will tell you right now, we are falling behind in email because it is, I don't know what it is, but lately, it's overwhelming. So it's...
Carbon copies on a lot of FYIs from a lot of agencies and a lot of things going on, and you're on every...
Well, I've got weeks, I'm still going back making sure we've done all those things, so...
These are very tough times in that we're, we have many, many, many projects. I mean, I'm feeling it as well. There's a lot to know, and there's a lot to deal with, and our packets come and they're ultra-thin, so, yeah.
You had mentioned too before, this is just a list off the last couple of commission meetings of things to do, and as you had mentioned before, as well as tonight, what we can outline there are goals, and what I'm spending time on are two different beasts now, and to the point that I don't know if those goals are going to get accomplished, at least as they were initially outlined, and we probably need to go back and revisit that, because this list grows by the meeting.
And I think that that's difficult for staff when we're not focused on what we want to accomplish. Let me get Nancy in there.
I caution you on the deliberating through email, that you don't want to have an online virtual meeting, because that's something that's against the rules for posting meetings. And so if you're going back and forth on things and giving your opinions and deliberating when that's supposed to be done in open session, then that's a big issue that we can't allow to happen as well.
I think we're doing pretty well on that.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Jim lays out, you do lay out policy issues in your memos, but I haven't seen anyone respond, so that's kind of, yeah.
I'm happy to hear that.
Just let me get Daphne, because she's been waiting. Oh, okay, okay.
Just a caution on the information, when there's a case on an appeal, appeals are limited to issues brought up on the record, and we're starting to get requests for information that's not on the record and starting to share those with everybody. I don't think it's a good idea until after the appeal is either withdrawn or a decision is made. And that was part of the issue with the Cove.
Okay, Daphne.
We won't have to share. Well, and then the last thing, I don't know if, you know, you start a new job and there's, it's like information overload, and, but the city is staffed for a city, it's 30,000, and we're staffed for a city of 15,000. So we are 50% less staffed, and that's where a lot of things, the frustration of why answers aren't here quick enough, and we run a lean machine.
I think this is good to have a discussion like this because communication will be always an issue. So if there's a little bump in the road, it's going to catch it early, so I'm sure it won't be our last discussion on it, but hopefully we all have a better, are a little bit more ease going forward. Okay, thank you. Let's move on then to the last item on the, do we need a break?
You need a bonfire.
I know, I always wear a sweater in the summertime. Did we say break, yes?
Five.
Okay, all right, five. We get the press to calm down. We are back in session.
Stir in the pot.
Pressure out of control.
I know, the city manager has a report, but before that, we have one last thing, and that is to discuss economic development coordinator position. This is something brought up by Commissioner Nocedo, Jim, by Jim.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Call me, Alice. Work session.
This is the new beginnings, yeah.
It's a work session. We always do.
Thank you, Alice. I sent out, over a couple of weeks, some information and proposals for advancing one of the items that is on our goals and objectives, which is hiring an economic development coordinator. We have that Excel spreadsheet that lists as an item that doesn't have specific funding devoted to it. In researching the question and chatting with Mr. Wimmer, I did some homework and found out that there has been for a while in budgets, the line item for an economic development coordinator. And we also have some money in the business license reserve fund as well, in our contingency fund, and I wanted to see if we could work to advance making this higher. I think between the already budgeted line item and the money that does exist in the business license reserve fund, we could, I think we could make this higher. And I think it's a question of priorities and whether we want to, you know, utilize money from the business license reserve for this, the contingency. I would advocate for doing so because the contingency, I don't think we could find a situation that fits the word contingency more than the contingency of the economic recession since the Great Depression. And we do owe to our citizens, you know, expanding economic opportunities for them, especially in a time of recession. And I would like to advance that idea and see if the commission is interested in doing that. I included in an email the page from the Oregon City Futures Plan that Leland Consulting had developed, and it actually gives a list of tasks, kind of specs, that an economic development coordinator would undertake. This would be something that would be citywide. I think Lloyd's is doing, Purdy is doing a great job as far as economic development within the downtown area. You know, all the city residents, citywide, I think, are interested in having economic development in their neighborhoods, in our industrial lands, as zoned outside the downtown area as well. I'm very intrigued by something Ms. Holden shared with me when I met with her regarding experts in Oregon who do economic development that is really, really, truly green ecological development as well. And I would like to propose that we move this forward by getting from Mr. Leland a kind of like a spec list from him on what it would cost, in his view, to hire this person, what they would do, what role they would play, how they would fit into specifically advancing this larger economic development strategy that he did very good work on back in 2004, in which we're working to implement. And also, I would also like to, you know, see if we can get some other input from this gentleman, whose name I can't remember, at the University of Oregon, on green economic development coordinators, and see if we can kind of brainstorm, perhaps, at a future city commission work session on how we can go about making this higher. But I think the fundamental issue is just priorities and leadership and deciding to use the resources that we do have, already budgeted, to go ahead and make this higher. So that's, those are my introductory comments.
I agree with, I agree with, oh, we can use first names, right? I agree with you. Anyway, the, I mean, I'll just pull out the thing that, you know, has been our, well, I don't know, it's been on our radar the whole time, and yet we haven't advanced it at all. It's the development of the industrial lands around campus that we need to have somebody that can pull, pull the players together in that particular area. Of course, that's not being addressed at all in our main street program plan. I can't help having the concerns, and I'm sure it's largely recession-driven, but this, the red sides development there, the lead certified development there is ending up to be a government leased facility, and I don't think that was what our overall dream was going to be. Now, there may be some benefits to some commercial entities in the area to have that, but it's, some of that area outside the downtown area is, needs some additional stimulus. But I'm particularly thinking about the needs in the industrial areas around the college is something that we need to focus on.
Rocky?
I think it's important to talk about it, or at least, I would support it. My one comment especially is that this seems more of appropriate use of the business license fund than I've seen so far.
My questions about it, because I've thought we needed staff to assist Larry, who's our economic development officer for a long time. I think the question for me is when, and the questions that I have under the when revolve around, as I talk to other cities, nobody's adding staff, and I'm worried about this being a time of contraction. I'm also worried about the five officers that we're going to have through cops, and adding that and that sustainability of the ability to, I'm not arguing the need, because I'm not at all, in my mind, is it the right time? Can we sustain it? And what does it look like to add staff at a point like this? The second one is that, let's see, this, you're talking about, this is an urban renewal line item, right?
It shouldn't be, probably.
No, the copies I gave were out of our proposed city budget, and the business license fund is part of it.
Well, I know that is, I was thinking the other one was. So Larry, this person would work for you, you'd make the hire, and...
If I might also think to explore, and I'm not suggesting one way or another, whether we want to have a city staff person or a contracted individual, and that's kind of something you would look at in terms of what's best financially and so forth, and also what's perhaps best in terms of what you set forward for this person to do. Economic development is always there, but there may be certain crucial needs that need something on a specialized line to begin with as opposed to hiring a given staff person if we can outline. And he suggested getting Mr. Leland to sit down with us to help figure out what the things are. I suggest the industrial areas and so forth.
Also, could you also, I'm sure you're going to respond, Zach here.
I just want to...
Would that be true? Well, I just want to put some other questions on the table, because we do have some about that. And the other one would be, does this diminish our need for consultant help? You know, what skill sets can you typically find? Because I know now we have the need for financial analysis at a very high level, and we have attorneys that do specific specialty work, et cetera. Other questions on the table? Yeah, Daphne?
Oh, sorry, Larry. Well, you know, I'm interested in it, too, for the industrial and then the green jobs. But I thought one of the goals we had is that this year we were going to work towards the certification of those lands so that they could be open for more of these grants and...
State certification.
State certification on those industrial.
Yeah, let me go through a couple of things. This item is on your goal list, so that's one of the things that we were, would be bringing to you in this year. You've got to remember, this is July the 7th, and the fiscal year has just started, so, you know, some of those things, it's a matter of getting to. There are, and this is a position that I wouldn't turn down if that's where you want to go down that road. In fact, I would have welcomed it a long time ago. But there's a lot of reasons why we haven't moved in that direction, and there are some things that you'll need to think about if you want to do that. And particularly if it's broader than urban renewal, because it takes on a different form, and the question comes up, and Mr. Nocedo has indicated at least a place you could start with, but there are some concerns in regards to that budget is how do you fund that position?
By the way, you could decrease my primal fears by calling me Jim.
All right. Jim!
And I leave there with communication.
Let me, let me go back to my point here.
You've got to be careful what you write.
Thank you.
It's the primal part I'm struggling with.
Next will be on our chairs during the...
That's right. The question... The, the question too, and it could be debated, and this is one that you would have to wrestle with, and particularly funding it beyond urban renewal. Is this a new program? Because with, and let me just give you some, some of your specifics with the business license fund and saying that you'll need to think about it. I think the contingency in there, I didn't look at that, I think it's a couple of hundred thousand, I think it is. We have committed to, and roughly, your business license on annual basis in this fund bringing in about 35,000. We have committed for the next year, and probably be a two-year commitment, the way this is kind of shaping up, is 50,000 for Main Street, as well as a number of other programs. We have continued to hit that, so that contingency is going to come down. You'll still have some in there, but we're going to delete that pretty fast, particularly if we bring funding into this. Just looking at our salary ranges, is this position, is in the budget, and the one I had was a little dated, so I ran it out some, it's roughly about, for the salary, it's about $90,000. And again, depending on the level of skill you're looking at, that's probably not far off. We may be able to get it for 85 or something of that nature.
Do you have the benefits?
Again, that, you add the benefits to it, it's going to kick it up to about 137,000. So, you know, we're going to eat into that contingency real fast, and then you're going to get into a question, then what do you, how do you sustain the position? And it's going to probably become a general fund issue. Now, two is, you have the information that was provided by Dave Wimmer, and it's one of the debates I have in with staff a little bit, in regards to urban renewal, is, I think there's some things in here that we're not charging for that needs to be charged out. You don't have Nancy Crushhour's time in there, you definitely don't have Alita's time in there, and probably 50% of her time should be charged. Mr. Cockle would be charged there, I think now, some of Ms. Bankhead's time should be charged there, Nancy Add some of her time should be charged in there to urban renewal. End result, you add in this position, if you funded an urban renewal of these, with ongoing and increasing legal costs, with the more projects we get into, the amount we have budgeted in urban renewal is going to be bumping up against what we have there as well. Not that, again, if we accomplish more things, we get more increments, so maybe we can fund a little bit more in there. So I think those are the, those are the concerns that you're going to have to wrestle with. I think it does get down to, what are you asking this person to do? And the list Mr. Leland has there, I know that list because we had that conversation, I think he probably took most of that from the thing. But those are the things that they do. I do think if we're going to develop industrial properties, we need to be involved in that. We have to be careful, and I think we see a little bit of that this evening, is when do we take the lead on a piece of property we don't own, and how much do we support what a developer does? Because every day, I know our staff, if they're not cautious, is we have a lot of folks who would have them doing their work. And so, a question of who does what if you don't own the property. Now, getting things certified, things of that nature, some of the work we need to be doing, how do you get infrastructure where these grants at? This conversation we had later, a person could be involved in that. I do think touching base with existing businesses, what their needs are, how do they expand, what their expansion need, what problem are they facing, how can we do those? You know, right now, there may not be a lot of activity for them to do, but now's a good time to be doing some of that groundwork. I think the biggest issue that you're going to wrestle with is exactly what do you want this office to be doing? What type of resources are you going to allocate to it? Because it's going to be more than just a position, it's going to take up the person's going to be effective, and then how do you fund that? And is it a new program? That's the other issue that you've got to wrestle with.
Well, and I'm just, I'm remembering the discussion at budget time around the COPs grants, is that that, you know, is sort of tenuous to keep those on, and I think that's the priority. When you guys got on, I think that, in my opinion, so, I mean, I'm supportive of it if we can afford it, but I see us spending down that, the ending fund balance here pretty quick, and diminishing it. And I would like to see it secured through time, and the COPs are even tenuous, so how are we going to add another position at this point?
Well, first of all...
Mr. Leland.
First of all!
That worked.
First of all, one of the reasons I suggested a contracted position as opposed to a staff position was, we want, there may be things that we want to initially carve out of the piece, and not necessarily look for a full-time person. The point is, we've had for a long time, within the current city amendments, we had a long time industrial areas up there that have, nothing's happened to. And I, you know, there are the infrastructure questions and so forth, but I think that because of where we wanted that to occur, the basis was a community college, we have to have somebody to work with the, that major stakeholder, as well as property owners and other stakeholders, to find out what industries we're likely best able to attract. And some of us may have ideas, but actually, that's going to, that's going to take a bit of work to do it. And I think, frankly, we're not, we're not hiring July 1st, so, I mean, so we're not going to have a full salary coming off, number one, off this year's contingency. But also contractual, and that, I think it's a position that we can build ourselves up into as opposed to hiring somebody right off the bat if we have some focused areas that we want this person to attend to. We've got the Main Street program, we've got the Urban Renewal Agency, and I, I'm not, I don't have the critical interest in that person working in that area. We've got things going. A person may be able to provide some assistance in some way. The areas in which we, we had the need, we specified the zoning, and nothing's happened for years.
Yep. One thing we might be able to do, and I haven't inquired, given some of their budget issues, is maybe the county would be interested in doing a little contractual work, and they may have a free person right now versus a layoff.
Yeah, we have Renata, doesn't she do a lot of that industrial land up there?
Yeah, again, I, it's the one thing we have to look at, skill sets, instead of blending what we're trying to accomplish.
I think that's a good idea. I'm wondering if there's any value in holding off until September, when we know, isn't September where we know about the COPs grants?
Well, that's kind of, that was a timeframe I was looking at, just kind of see where we would be.
I think I'd feel more comfortable just so we know who, what, when, and...
She hasn't heard anything on this end.
But we know...
We've heard work, you know, Jay, that we don't know of a COP grant by the end of this month.
Oh, great. Then July, okay, good, awesome. Then we could, we could postpone the decision with Jim.
Postpone what decision?
Well, postpone this conversation a little bit till after that, so that we know...
Well, the end of July is no problem, postpone the conversation. I, I, yeah, I still don't think, I mean, I don't, I don't think it's still a contingent on the COPs grant coming through, so I, I don't, I think, I think we need...
If you're making it a contracted person, you're thinking of different people.
Yeah, and I think initially, that's, that might be a better position to be in. At one point, we may then realize another need, that we need a staff person, but initially we may not.
And what I've, I've heard your discussions this evening, and which I think probably your next work session will be, we want to do that if we can arrange that, is the two gentlemen that you spoke of, is see if we can get them here to kind of chat about their views on this issue, and then we can kind of develop a plan, then you can make decisions based on these other issues of where you want to go with it.
Yeah.
Now, I'm not sure why we, I mean, there are many, many, many experts in the field. Why specifically we want that one?
Is that the best?
Yeah, that's my question.
Well, my, sure.
We have an office of sustainability in Portland, we have numerous consultants...
True, I mean, yeah, I, I guess, I guess many of us on this commission, and I would include you in that, are very concerned about ecological and environmental development. The individual, I guess, is not important, but that, but the concept of doing economic development, you know, with out-of-the-box, you know, truly future-focused environmental development instead of, you know, the same old, same old, I think, doing this, I mean, the individual who's hired does really make a difference in, you know, in what we pursue and what, so, I guess, I guess the individual isn't important, but having that perspective would be important to me, as a commissioner, to have that, you know, environmental perspective to it, so, but, yeah, as far as, as far as the individual. But I guess, one of the things I'd like to add to the conversation was, the, I see this position and the economic development revenue it can generate as, as kind of complementary to the discussion of the COP grants. I don't necessarily see it as an either-or, because the COPs grant, we're supposed to, you know, look into the future, because it is, what, five years? It's not forever. And the economic growth that would be facilitated by this, you know, this hire, I think would help us in, you know, generating the revenue we want to be able to fund an adequate police force even beyond the COPs grant. So I really, I think, I see the COPs grant as, you know, another argument in favor of making this particular hire.
Excuse me for interrupting, and I really appreciate that. My name is, is this on? Hello? There you are.
Excuse me for interrupting, my name is William Gifford, living in Oregon City. I just want to make sure that in the conversation, that this council does not forget one of its very valuable partners, that has, as a stated goal is to improve the economic health of this community, and that is the Chamber of Commerce, that there's a lot of talent there, and I just don't want that to be forgotten.
Thank you. The, oh, the other question that I would like to know, and I could ask it tomorrow in my day and暮, so I can do a little research, is that in this particular time, how are economic development specialists doing? I'd just like to ask that question. You know, what, do we have a zillion roaming around looking for jobs? I'd like to do, if you don't mind, I'll just do a little market research, but I'll have an opportunity to be with multiple, multiple people.
And one last point I would like to make, just about, about the appropriateness of something like this specifically during the recession.
Yeah, yeah.
When we, when we had the city commission, I mean, the Urban Renewal Commission Retreat, I brought up the point that I had heard from a developer, that even in these economic times, there are market niches, like, for example, there is even financing now for apartment buildings as opposed to condos in a recession. And, I mean, those kind of like individual targeted opportunities probably are all over the place that someone with the right skill set can identify for us as a community to engender economic development. So, good.
Okay. So we'll have a creature discussion then.
So I just want to tie this up. The next work session, we will have Mr. Leland and some other...
We'll attempt to get them if we can, if they, if they can get it in their schedule.
Okay, thank you.
Any, you have a, you have a city manager's report on library.
Well, yeah, the, the Library District Board, is that what it's called? District Advisory Board, has a partnership agreement, no, I'm just...
That's wastewater.
Yeah. Anyhow, they're meeting, and the issue that has come up is whether Tuolotin should be allowed to annex to the district.
They didn't step up there before, to heck with them.
Well, that, I mean, that's kind of the message that we were going to deliver, but I thought it'd be best that you chatted about that before, let me...
We can, we can end this discussion quick. I did it.
Did you have any, did you have any pros to share?
Well, I got, I thought I'd give you a little bit of background. This was an issue that, that came up, as you recall, when this was being formed, and the county had asked those who wanted in and those who did not want in. And Tuolotin was one at that time, chose not to take this to their voters. I think Damascus was another.
And Johnson City.
And Johnson City. And what has kind of come up now is a lot of those citizens now are going to the libraries, and they have to pay $95 a year because those places didn't get in, and so I'm sure they're getting a little bit of pressure. But also, you have sections of Lake Oswego, Wilsonville, and Tuolotin that are in Multnomah County. And just looking at this and the division of dollars, if, if all of those were to come in, is about 450,000, I think, so, but even though Tuolotin is just one of those, and I don't have that figured, I don't know, Scott, if you have what, what Tuolotin share that would be, but it does dilute the pie that is being distributed by more folks coming in. And that's one of the issues that we raised when this thing was being formed, is that if we're going to expand the boundaries, add new libraries, at least those of us here now, we think really we should expand the revenues in some way as opposed to, let's re-divide the pie, because that could have some long-term implications of what we can do. So anyhow, this is the debate, and just wanted to see if the position about, we don't believe at this time we ought to be annexing new properties into the district, is really the position that the city commission wanted to take. Looks like you might have...
Seeing none.
Karen has something to say.
You need to introduce yourself.
The little green button needs to come on, yeah, there you go.
Okay, Karen Maury, friends of the library, and I was on the county library district, or budget committee. This came up as a little discussion as we were meeting to review the budget. This won't be the last city heard from, is my guess. However, one of the alternatives, because they didn't choose to participate in the first place, and their taxpayers are not being assessed the district fee, is that they be limited to only what they collect within their boundaries, that they wouldn't benefit from the pool. That if this is their choice, that's fine, but they only get the money that would come to them from their voters who are not currently paying. The other city to the east, if they chose to also do this, would have to opt as to which library was going to serve their needs. And their voters' money would go to whichever library was serving their needs, but that was one of the alternatives, because we knew that the requests were going to be coming in because the voters who didn't get to vote on this...
Does that require a new vote of those folks?
They would have to vote on it, yeah. Their voters would have to actually vote to impose the tax.
Well, I, but I have a little logistic problem with this, because the, the network is being supplied by the county, and that network is then going to go to Tuolotin, and that's going to be money that's coming out of the, out of the county. It's not going to be coming from there. And so, they're, they're going to get services, they're going to get services out of this system that's not going to be coming out of their pocket.
The general fund amount is already set, though. The county passed in their budget the general fund allotment for network.
Still, it's still the same thing. It's diluting. It dilutes it one way or another, because they're going to, you're going to transport books to them and books back to us, and the same thing goes, and then you have, I don't know what exists in terms of inter-county issues, I mean, they regard themselves as Washington County more than they do Clackamas County anyway.
And Tuolotin is unique, because they are split between two counties.
So I would say we look at these on a case-by-case basis, but from, from that standpoint, I doubt really that no outside money from this library agreement we have is, is not going to be going to them. I think some is.
Whether maybe it would be equalized, through, if they have to vote, then maybe that also is a piece of that pie. I think that's a possibly creative way of looking at it.
Does that cut into any of the, if they were to come in, does that cut into anyone else's existing boundaries right now?
The discussions that I've had, you wouldn't have to allow that.
So really, how it's done?
Yeah, if the, if the, if the balance of the advisory board basically said, we are not changing any of the boundaries, if your voters approve, then, you know, this is the service that you'll be allotted. You know, it's one way it could happen, because Tuolotin's one issue, but we're going to hear from Damascus.
It would depend on how the agreement would be, or the IGAs would have to be rewritten and renegotiated, but as I understand it, if that weren't very specific... to be rewritten and renegotiated. But as I understand it, if that weren't very specifically addressed, that if Tuolotin were to annex any future property into their city that is in Clackamas County, that would automatically take it out of that county pool and become part of the city's, well, the city-only AV that gets returned directly to the cities. So that, that's a concern.
I think the safest position that you may wish to take at this point would say, at this moment in time, we would not support any annexation. This thing is so new, I think we need to get it up and going. And, and there needs to be a timeframe before, because they had a chance, they chose not to. And now, since it passed, when you're going to divide the money, we'd like a piece of it. I, I think there's got to be a waiting period before we even take these issues up.
We don't know.
Well, the, the idea that we're getting some capital for a new library, that would, what if then, some of these new areas want to build a library?
Well, as I understand that point on specifically for Tuolotin, not, not...
Well, I know Tuolotin just built a new one.
Right. And they've, they've specified in their, they passed a resolution basically to ask the county to support this or consider this, which is why we're having this District Advisory Board meeting. In their resolution, they said they would agree to terms that they wouldn't ask for any of the capital money. That's just Tuolotin, though. There's other, you know, if any other cities, so.
You have all the advice we need?
Scott, do you feel comfortable?
Yes.
Also want to pass on kudos to whoever found the combo to the air conditioning system.
Yes, yes.
Who did that? Who did it? Oh, God, fantastic.
It was an accident. I don't even know why. I just went up there and started pushing the buttons. Probably in about a half an hour, it's going to be 95 degrees.
But we won't be here.